And we begin with a roll call.
Councillor Bettin?
Here.
Councillor Birkey?
Here.
Councillor Youssef?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Here.
And Mayor White?
Here. First item of business tonight is a proclamation, which I will be ever so delighted to read This is proclamation for EdSync, March 1st, 2018. I had the privilege of reading this at the appropriate time on March 1st. Whereas mountain bike specialists, originally known as the outdoorsman, opened 50 years ago today, that was March 1st, and whereas EdSync created a culture of mountain biking for Durango by having the vision to create events and opportunities that put Durango on the map as a bike-centered town, and whereas EdSync hosted the UCI Mountain Bike World Championships, first held in the United States in Durango, Colorado with Percator and Resorts in 1990, helping to forge the Durango brand of outdoor enjoyment, and whereas the economic impact of outdoor recreation in Colorado was significant, totaling over $30 billion each year and supporting 185,000 jobs, and whereas EdSync created the Iron Horse Bicycle Classic event in 1972, now attracting over 2,500 bicyclists to our area each year and hosting the second oldest road bike race in the United States, and whereas EdSync worked with the initial Trails 2000 Board to assist in forming a mission to plan, build, and maintain trails in Durango to educate trail users and to encourage connectivity for activities that included mountain biking, hiking, trail running, and equestrian use, and whereas EdSync assisted countless organizations to thrive and succeed, including the San Juan Mountains Associations and the Fortunist College Cycling Team, which promote enjoyment of the benefits of outdoor recreation in Durango, and whereas EdSync has assisted in creating an economic benefit to our area through events, organizational support, and hiring staff for his independent business, and whereas EdSync's vision and personal experience of Durango a better place to live, work, and enjoy has touched and inspired thousands of people's lives. Now therefore, I Dick White, Mayor of Durango, Colorado, do hereby proclaim March 1st, 2018, as EdSync Day, in partnership with the Iron Horse Bicycle Classic, Trails 2000, and the community, to recognize and honor EdSync for his many valuable contributions to the community of Durango, Colorado.
Well, thank you, Mayor. As I said on March 1st, if my mother was here, she would actually believe I did all that stuff. But my father would remind me that nobody can do all that stuff alone, and I've just had the privilege of being able to work on teams of people to accomplish these things, and it's been great, and the city has certainly been supportive of many of these projects. But it verifies grassroots is important, and people get ideas, and they grow, and they develop, and that's part of what makes this town special. So I appreciate all the people that I've got to work with over the years, and my family, and employees, and friends, and the governmental agencies that have helped at the appropriate places and times to make all these events succeed. It's been really great. But I do have a couple of questions that my grandson asked me. He said, "Is this an annual event?" And then the second question he asked is, "Can we ride our e-bike anywhere we want on EdSync Day?" I guess we'll have to work that out, but thank you very much.
Well, it's a little late in case he did.
In case he did.
Thank you.
And I want to observe that at the 50th celebration of the business on Thursday, there was also a letter delivered from Senator Bennett, and also a proclamation from the Governor of Colorado, also declaring EdSync Day on March 1st this year. So congratulations, Ed.
I had one comment. I knew your mother and daddy, and so they were such pillars of our community. They would be so proud of you. They always were proud of you and your family, your brothers, and I'm so proud that we were able to recognize EdSync Day. That is so cool, and thank you and your family for the traditions that you have given Durango. So thank you very much.
Indeed. And now I'm going to depart slightly from the agenda and do a slight advance on public participation. I will let Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, thank you.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Well, I am a Skyhawk fan. Let's get that straight first, okay? And so, yeah, go Skyhawks! And I've had the privilege of watching the Skyhawk basketball team for years, and so I have goosebumps right now. I'm so excited that the Skyhawk basketball boys team are here tonight with their coach, Barney Hinkle, our Athletic Director, Dean Thomas, the President of the University. So I'm going to ask all three of you to come to the podium, and would all the Skyhawk men come on down and line up right here in front of the short city councilors?
I don't have to stand on a chair.
I am standing on my chair. Oh, gosh.
Middle, middle, middle.
And if you would, Coach, if you would start by introducing all the young men on the team, please.
Absolutely. I'll start off with our Associate Head Coach, Daniel Stephenson, Senior Rasmus Bock, Junior Alex Semedani, Senior Kane Martinez, Sophomore Riley Ferris, Senior Daniel Hernandez, Senior D.J. Miles, Senior Brandon Wilson, Junior Marquel Beasley, Sophomore Michael Ranson, Junior Caleb Cobb, Freshmen Cesar Molina, and Freshman Wyatt Hayes. These are the 2017-2018 Men's Basketball RMAC Champions.
And Coach, where do we go now?
Right, so we'll be playing in the NCAA Tournament Saturday night, 7:30 Mountain Time, against Texas A&amp;M Commerce University in Canyon, Texas.
Fabulous. Well, you can't see me, but maybe you can hear me, that we are so excited about our Skyhawks, from every, from the academics to the arts to the sports. Durango really loves our teams and all of you. We appreciate, you know, you give up a lot of your personal time to participate, your family time, your academic life, and so I just wanted to share with you our enthusiasm for all, oh my God, there we go, can I shake your hand? Oh, wow. That all that you do for our community, and when you leave our community, please take the memory of this day with you, and throw that rock in the river and let it ripple on, so all the good that you do for your futures. Thank you, Skyhawks! Woo!
I'd just like to say one thing. Our team motto this year has been, "We need everybody," and it's taken all of us to get to where we are, including our President, Dean Thomas, and Athletic Director Barney Hinkle. So it's been very much a team effort, as it is with everything in Durango, so we're very appreciative and thankful.
Thank you for coming tonight. Thank you, guys, we're so proud of you. Can I get a picture?
Yeah.
Sorry, Mayor. City Council, why don't you come down here and let's get a picture.
Standing from the chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. I'm getting scared to speak down.
I've been told never to.
Yeah, give her a picture. Sorry, everybody. One, two, three. Hold on. One, two, three. Yay!
Congratulations, Mayor. Congratulations. 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 Thanks for having us here. Yeah, look forward to getting together.
Me too. Yeah, it'd be so fun.
All right. Thanks a lot. Hey, thanks so much.
Thank you all, thank you.
Thanks so much for the reaction.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. You're so good. See ya. Thank you, Coach. Thank you, all of you. Thank you, everyone. Safe trip. That's so cool. Mm-hmm. Absolutely. Yeah. Okay, it's cleared up now. Okay, back to business.
Next item on the agenda, getting back to more mundane things, review of the consent agenda.
Item 4.1 is approval of the minutes for the study session of February 13th, 2018. 4.2 is discussion and possible action concerning appointments to boards and commissions for 2018. 4.3, discussion and possible action concerning revisions to the 2018 pay and classification plan for the reclassification of the lead parking enforcement officer, meter technician, and recreation manager, and the addition of a customer service manager and a meter technician 1. And item 4.4 is a request for public hearing to be held on March 20th, 2018, to consider an ordinance amending regulations and penalties of the provisions of the city code related to the use, placement, and security of trash containers, and to require mandatory strict compliance with those provisions to minimize conflicts with wildlife inside the city.
Sir, any member of the public who'd like to remove an item for the consent agenda? Any member of council? I entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to approve the consent agenda.
I'll say it. We have a roll call.
Councillor Bettin?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councillor Birkey?
Yes.
Councillor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes. And moving on, the next item is public participation. If there's any member of the public who wishes to speak to the council on an item, on an issue that is not already scheduled for hearing tonight, this is the time you might come forward. People are entitled to five minutes. I don't see anyone rushing to the podium. In that case, we will move on to council reports and actions.
Well, I'll go first. For those that are out there, I just wanted to acknowledge all the work that's being done by both the county and the city on homelessness and transient issues in our community. I think it's an issue that we've seen a lot in the newspaper, and I was privileged to attend my, I don't know how many meetings we've done so far, but we spent another three and a half hours or so this morning on the issue with the county commissioners, and just wanted to make our citizens aware that we're all working really hard to try and find some good solutions for that community, provide a good, safe, healthy place for folks to be, as well as address some of the issues that are relevant to homelessness and transancy affecting members of our community, and hope to have some good resolution here in the next week.
And Mayor, I've asked the city manager to talk about the general fund, the enterprise funds, and the special revenue funds that the city has. We're into our public engagement, and so we're sharing information with members of the public. There was several meetings last week on Lake Nighthorse and on our public engagement, and more to come, so city manager, if you would, please.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tim. The purpose tonight is to continue the dialogue with the public so that the public can have the tools it needs to make good decisions coming forward. These are some terms that we've used with the city council during the budget process, and some of you who watch various presentations will be reminded of these terms, but I think to better understand where we are with our finances and long-term outlook, it's important that we make these distinctions, and I'd like to go through each of these in some detail. And I think the more we do this, the better the understanding will be by the public of why we're doing the public outreach and why it's important for their input. But generally, the accounting that we do is fund accounting, so we have separate businesses that operate within the city budget. In the general fund, we use that term to describe the general government items, like the city council, city manager, city attorney, and so forth, public safety, that would be police, the amount of money we give to the fire district, our 911 center, streets, which includes maintenance, line striping, snow removal, I wish we had snow removal this year, street cleaning, sidewalks, parks and rec, library, community support, like the block grants we give out, and maintenance of our facilities. All of those activities and departments that I've just described receive their money from taxes, which include property taxes, sales taxes, lodging tax, franchise fees, charges for service, licenses, permits, fines, forfeitures, and a variety of miscellaneous revenues. So these are the general operating funds for the city. And we also have enterprise funds. We run several departments like a business. We run a water utility, sewer utility, the airport. We have a sustainable services fund that includes trash collection, recycling, the recycle center, and sustainability programs, and a transportation services fund, which includes the transit operations, the administration for that, parking, and multimodal. And then the third category is special revenue funds. These are funds that were approved by the voters and limited in use to the use the voters approved. So we have a 2015 sales tax, which is a dedicated half-cent sales and use tax. We have a road impact fund. The Durango Tourism Fund is the lodgers tax, and I think I probably already mentioned lodgers inappropriately with the general fund, but lodgers tax is a 2%. Conservation Trust Fund, Park Development Fund, Parks, Open Space, and Trails, or POST Fund, which is a quarter cent, and a capital improvement fund, which is a quarter cent, the other half cent if you add those two together, and the capital improvements fund specifically goes to the debt service for Florita Road and the library. What we have forecast going forward in year 2020, the general fund will be upside down. We will be spending more money than we're taking in, and that is not acceptable, and it's not legal, and it's something we're going to try to avoid, and we're getting an early start. We're not waiting for a crisis. We're not going to put the community in a position where they feel forced to act. Instead, we're doing a community engagement program that's already begun. Last week, we had one of many future meetings, and we're asking for input. We're asking, "What is it you like about the city? What would you like more of? What would you like less of?" And that feedback will allow us to assess our current level of service. But to do that, I think the voters need to understand some of the terms that we use so they can be informed and provide us with information and feedback that is most useful. The enterprise funds have been the subject of years of work by the city council. We've systematically reviewed and increased water and sewer rates. The best evidence of that is the Santa Rita Water Reclamation Treatment Plant, which is at Santa Rita Park. That's a $54 million contract, part of a $64 million effort. We're also looking ahead for water resources, particularly a new water treatment plant. We co-own the airport with the county. We've made some changes in sustainable services this year so that it can keep pace with expenses. But in the enterprise fund category, the city council acts as the board of directors of a business. Each of these run like a business, and you have to adjust the fees, the rates, the charges to pay the expenses of those businesses. The general fund is different. If we look at revenue measures, because of Tabor, every tax increase must be voted on, and because of the charter, city charter, any debt has to be voted on, so it takes a little more planning. And the feedback we receive from the citizens from this process will help inform the council in the 2019 budget process, which staff begins in July. And I would also, since I'm at the podium, remind the audience that we have one month of sales tax data, and it was down, so the December sales reported in January are down 0.1%. It's not a good start of the year, but we can perhaps overcome that. The council approved the budget with a 0% change in sales tax. Sales tax is the greatest revenue source in the general fund that would affect all of those departments that I've mentioned previously, and we've had a very successful shop local campaign, and I think we've been good at getting the word out on that, but I will give it another plug. For every purchase you make locally, those taxes pay for police, streets, and so forth. And if we allow, if we make choices over the internet or going to Farmington, those tax dollars pay for Farmington's police force and not Durango's, and they go to the state of New Mexico and not the state of Colorado. So, subject to your questions, that concludes my report.
Oh, I think it's always good to talk about where the money comes from and how you spend the money as a government. So we live within our means as the city of Durango, and when people say they want to see more policemen, then I say, "Don't shop on the internet." You know, that's the tie-in for me. I love the police department, and the fire department, and the EMTs, but that's how we pay for them. If you want the library open on Sunday, shop locally. You know, every time you buy a car, if you buy it out of state, it doesn't help Colorado, and it sure doesn't help the county or the city. So these are some choices you make, and I understand your choices. I've lived here 43 years, but you need to know how your choices impact the police department, the library, the streets department, and also the parks department. All of our parks and recreation are funded through sales tax. So thank you very much, city manager, and that's all I have to report on.
Other councilors?
I have a couple. I attended the multimodal board meeting, and I just wanted to kind of update you on a couple of things. Number one, I did confirm with them that we are engaging in the public process this year indefinitely, and we would have transportation as a key priority in that, you know, or not as a key priority, but in the list of prioritization that will take place by the community. They understood that, and so we just kind of closed the loop on that discussion, and I wanted to let you know that they are working on reviewing the various projects for the strategic plan for our upcoming joint meeting. Couple of things, just to keep you in the loop, recall that we have budgeted $100,000 in 2018 for the design of Main Avenue and traffic calming. We continue our design for the, by the way, the construction improvements for that project are expected to take place in 2019. The design is $100,000. The construction, they've slated for $500,000 for 2019 for the design for Main Avenue. They are continuing as well for the Needham Connect 2 project in 2018, with construction in 2019. This is a $1.7 million project with $902,000 in grant funding, and they are continuing their Rusa Avenue shared use path from Ninth Street to El Paso. This is a $1.9 million project with $949 in grant funding. I point this out just to make you aware that multimodal continues to hold true to their promise of leveraging our sales tax dollars with grant funding, which is wonderful to see. I also wanted to let you know that we have a Women's Resource Dinner on March 15th, Thursday night, and this is a very special night. This is an extraordinary women's awards dinner. They will be recognizing women in our community who have contributed to the success and goals of women. Three awardees will be honored that night. It's at the Doubletree Hotel. It starts at 5:30 PM, and keynote speaker, Mary Monroe Brown, with Trails 2000, will be speaking that evening. You can buy tickets on their website at WRCdurango.org.
Done.
Right? Good job. And that's it.
Good.
I'm good, thanks.
Got a couple of things, just my routine, back in the routine of Coffee with the Mayors Thursday morning at 9:00. Last week, I, actually, no, two weeks ago, on the 21st, the day of morning after our last council meeting, I had the experience that the mayor gets of cutting ribbons, or at least participating in a ribbon cutting for the reopening of Albertson's. On Thursday, the 1st, as the manager has already reported, we launched the civic engagement program. One of the important things there is that there is an online survey that residents can contribute to. You can see, find that at durangogov.org/engage. And also, there are teams of city staff members available to address civic groups. If you are interested in learning more about the nitty-gritty of, you know, what's buried in that slide that the manager presented and the kinds of things that we're looking at, you can also do that. The contact information for that you can get on the, at the same website. The other things, there's morning, there was a meeting this morning of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Commission, which I in fact ducked out of after five minutes because we had a special meeting before our meeting with the commissioners. However, on the agenda was planning for the, was it Fifth Annual, I believe, Youth Expo, which is scheduled for May 2nd, and also, before I left, I did a important plug to the student representatives urging their participation in the civic engagement program. It's really their city that we're building and leaving to them, and so it's really important for citizens in all age groups to contribute to forming this vision for how the city of Durango is going to go forward. And let's see, going, future events, the reason we are meeting on Monday night is that tomorrow night are the political caucuses. If you are a registered Republican or Democrat, find where your caucus site is and exercise your right to participate in choosing candidates. This Thursday, the city council is having dinner with the Council of the Southern Indian Tribe, which is something we try to do on a fairly regular basis. There's been a significant turnover in the tribal council, so we're going to be meeting some... If you are a registered Republican or Democrat, find where your caucus site is and exercise your right to participate in, uh, choosing candidates. This Thursday, the city council is having dinner with the council of the Southern Ute Indian Tribe, uh, which is something we try to do on a fairly regular basis. Uh, there's been a significant turnover in, in the tribal council, so we're going to be meeting some, some, um, some of our counterparts for the first time. And the other, uh, I think the film festival is still going, but the Celtic festival is coming up next weekend, uh, those of you who enjoy Celtic music. And that's what I have to. Moving on, um, if I can get the, if I can get back to the agenda. We have, um, two items scheduled for public hearings tonight. The first of, this first is a legislative, um, and policy-related hearing, uh, which is a public hearing to consider an ordinance amending portions of Article 3 of Chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango regarding parking admin of administration and regulations and declaring an effective date. And I believe the city attorney has the staff report or?
Or I thought.
Or?
One of us will.
Planners.
I, I thought you were going to handle this one. We didn't get a chance to, uh, get together today, but I thought he was there.
Good evening, councilors. Kevin Hall, Assistant City Manager. Uh, what we have, uh, here today is some cleanup on some, uh, code items that, um, we had some, uh, number changing when we did some revisions a couple of years ago and then what, ultimately what happened is, uh, some of our booting provisions have the data inputting a little differently than it should based on what our municipal code says. So, um, as you see the agenda documentation, we, we're going to revise that. Um, the second item is to essentially amend the code language for loading zones to allow non-commercial marked vehicles to load and unload goods so long as, um, the vehicles continue to comply with the requirements for active loading within the 10-minute activity limit. Um, this kind of, this will assist city, uh, residents and visitors, uh, to do commerce in the downtown, uh, area a little more conveniently.
So that's the plumber and the unmarked truck? Is that why this is?
Well, it might be somebody picking something up who, um, otherwise might not be able to find parking. Uh, it, it could apply in a number of, um, situations, although we still have to comply with the loading zone requirements and in the past, uh, there was only certain folks could use that, so we're broadening that definition to allow for others to use it as well.
I, I think the plumber situation had trailer, so it's a longer vehicle.
So this could be the PTA picking up pizzas somewhere?
Correct.
And do they, do they need to put a note on the windshield? How, how will they, um, how will they alert the?
They get 10 minutes.
They get 10 minutes, no matter what their situation is?
The loading zone is there and it's, that's the requirement, so if they, uh, overstay their, uh, the rules, they are subject to the same violations as anyone else. Uh, the third item related to, uh, amending the existing requirements for, um, current registration of all vehicles parked on city right-of-way to include proper, proper display of the registration in keeping with the state law. So that you need to have current plates and, um, if you're going to be on the city right-of-way. So that's another kind of tidying up of, of past code language. And then the, the fourth item is to add a new code section to codify the longstanding allowance for semi-truck, uh, uh, semi-trucks, uh, to use the right-hand travel lane on Main Avenue downtown to essentially do deliveries, uh, to load and unload and, uh, the practice has been in place for a number of years, but it wasn't consistent with our regulations. So we're, um, essentially codifying it to allow that to happen. Um. Forgive the hesitation here, I'm just trying to catch up here a little bit. So essentially it allows for that, that guy delivering the chair or the five chairs to pull in the curbside travel lane, um, stop, quickly load and unload, uh, rather than what we've had seen in practice is, uh, um, also people pulling in the alleys and doing that. An alley only has one travel lane, so this actually creates a little bit better situation for everybody. So we're not blocking the alley, but then they use it, Main Avenue will come in the front door. Again, it was, uh, a lot of these really relate to either cleaning up the code that we have or making it a little more effective downtown for folks who need to do quick business, whether it's deliveries or pickups.
Kevin, I think it's also, um, we had trucks in the center turn lane and they were using a handcart to get across two lanes of traffic, so this would allow them to be closer to the sidewalk to make their deliveries.
That's safer, makes more sense. I understand.
Does that also, uh, uh, does that include the full length of Main Avenue, including North Main?
Wade, do you know what the, the reach of this applies to? Is it just downtown?
Really looking at it for the central business district.
Yeah, so central business.
Yeah. I have a vague recollection, however, of actually seeing a semi.
Me too.
Somewhere on North Main making deliveries.
Why wouldn't it apply up there?
Well, it's a different dynamic downtown, the way the travel lanes work, the way the downtown businesses operate, really quite different as we've been talking about North Main and its different nuances. Technically speaking, there is no center lane parking down on North Main.
Yeah.
Uh, CDOT doesn't allow it. It happens, uh, on occasion, uh, it's not ideal.
So the semis will continue to park in the middle of the?
Well, what we're talking about here is the city street and on Main Avenue, uh, and we're not talking about the US highway.
That's right. We do, we don't have jurisdiction on, on the state highway, is that correct?
The rules on the state highways, technically they're not supposed to be loading and unloading a center lane or any travel lanes as well.
Yep.
So, uh, you know, we've talked about that in the past, we've worked the CDOT in the past. If it becomes a significant issue again, we'll talk to them again and see what we can do. But we've helped notify, uh, delivery firms, uh, who are on the state highway in the past to try to keep them from doing that. But again, this is focusing on the central business district.
Mm-hmm. Sometimes I like to talk to the staff about semis going through neighborhoods. So, uh, not, not today, but a future conversation.
So, uh, we're asking for these code amendments, they're, they're fairly straightforward. Um, I think, uh, just by practice, staff likes to continually kind of keep an eye on things and these were ones that we've had kind of in the hopper for a number of months, uh, if not longer, we thought it was, uh, a good time to do this cleanup.
So this is just updating code language? Do we have to update any signs or anything?
I don't believe so, because the loading zone signs won't change. I think we're in pretty good shape there.
So, this looks pretty straightforward?
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Hall. Is there, I will open the public hearing and invite members of the public to, who might wish to speak to these proposed, uh, amendments to our parking regulations. Didn't think that was too likely, but, uh, I will close the public input section of the hearing and invite comments from council.
Straightforward. It is what it is. Speaking for a motion, Mayor?
I am.
Okay. I will move to direct the city attorney to prepare an ordinance amending portions of Article 3 of Chapter 24 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Durango regarding parking administration and regulations for the first reading at the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
I'll second. And we have a roll call.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes. Moving on, item 9.2.1 is a quasi, a quasi-judicial hearing, uh, which is a public hearing to consider an abandonment of city-owned right-of-way for a portion of 30, 30th Street east of Main Avenue. Mr. Schein.
Thank you, Mayor White, members of the council. I know your day started early today, um, and this is a relatively straightforward request that Planning Commission has recommended unanimously for approval, but I'll give you a quick overview and then can respond to any questions. This is, uh, something that came up during the recent redevelopment of what's now called the Rock Lounge on, uh, East 30th Avenue. Um, that property owner and an adjacent property owner have requested abandonment of that right-of-way. Uh, the Rock Lounge is able to use part of that area for their landscaping and some stormwater treatment and then the property owner down below, which actually fronts off, um, East Second Ave, um, has plans to maybe redevelop the, the property down there and this will give them a little more room to do that. As you know, abandements have occurred throughout Anamis City primarily on the east side of the river, but this is also a part of that neighborhood and, uh, the resulting right-of-way will be wide enough, um, to accommodate a local street. We're not compromising our ability there or to make sidewalk connections in the future. So real quickly, just to get you oriented, uh, the 111 East 30th address is the Rock Lounge and it's a unique parcel, it's split by an alley, so the building's on one side and then the parking area's on the other, uh, but it's one property that's, that's bound together. Um, and then 2977 is the, is the other property that will receive some of the right-of-way. This is looking from East Second back up, um, west towards Main and towards the alley. And then this is looking down, um, from the alley in the area. You can see some of the grades, mature vegetation, those are some of the things we look for when an abandonment request is made and really, um, that area outside of just a, a six-foot sidewalk corridor that we're retaining along the curb edge, that area, uh, doesn't have any use for the city. We don't expect to use it and so that's why we're supporting, uh, the abandonment request. This just gives you a little layout of some different areas. There is a little, uh, natural gas facility, a riser, um, right off the alley and we'll retain a easement so that, um, natural gas company can service that. It's a 14-foot wide abandonment and then we retain six feet, like I said, adjacent to the curb. These are the criteria in the Land Use and Development Code, um, that we need to evaluate abandonment requests by and generally, like I said, staff supports this. We're not compromising any of our abilities to, um, provide services to these lots or access to these lots. And, um, Planning Commission heard the item at their January 22nd meeting. Um, there were two adjacent property owners who came to that, had some concerns about was the new street section in front of the Rock Lounge going to continue down along East 30th to Second? Uh, I think they had a little bit of confusion about what the abandonment request was. The Planning Commission answered their questions and they were fine, but they just asked a few questions at that meeting. Other than that, we haven't had any other public comment. So with that, we're recommending approval and Planning Commission is doing the same and then the city attorney will prepare the ordinances to abandon.
Any questions for Mr. Schein?
I forgot to look on the map to see if the, if there was a previous ban on the other side of the right-of-way.
There's, uh, um, you can see it a little bit here, there's an existing detached walk at the enter strip, so they really only have, I think it's about six or eight feet on the backside of that, so, um, and it doesn't make sense to.
Not a good candidate.
Yeah. It doesn't have quite the grade and vegetation that you saw on, on this side, so there is a sidewalk there now.
And there's no expectation that they install any improvements, uh, as a result of this abandonment? Just?
Not as part of this, there may be some if they do develop, um, 2977 would be some public improvements.
Next case, I will open the public hearing and invite any member of the public who wishes to speak to this issue. Seeing none, I will close this section of the public hearing and then comments from council.
Seems straightforward.
Okay. Entertain a motion.
Mayor, I will move to approve the abandonment of city-owned right-of-way for a portion of East 30th Avenue, east of Main Avenue, subject to the findings and conditions outlined in the Planning Commission's staff report and direct the city attorney to prepare the enacting ordinance for first reading at the next city council meeting.
Thank you, I'll second that. And we have a roll call.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
Moving on, the next item is, uh, no, item 10.1, discussion and possible action on an emergency ordinance reenacting ordinance number 2017 slash 18 of the City of Durango, which established temporary regulations and enhanced penalties for the violation of the provisions of the city code related to, whoops, I think I'm missing some text here. Related to use, placement and security of trash containers and to require strict compliance with those provisions to minimize conflicts with wildlife in the city and declaring an effective date. Few words, some?
Yeah, a few words, I think very few are required. Uh, at the study session on last Tuesday, city council indicated that they would like to, uh, extend one, uh, one more extension on the emergency ordinance on wildlife containers that is set to expire on March 16th. So this extension would be for an additional, it's set for a full 60 days, which would end on May 4th. Uh, council anticipates that we will, staff will be drafting some permanent regulations following the hearing that was on the, the consent agenda tonight. So it's more than likely that this ordinance, uh, if council adopts it tonight, will be repealed upon the enaction of the permanent, uh, regulations, but in the meantime, this extends the, uh, current regulations, which imposes enhanced penalties, uh, through May 4th.
So Mayor, are you looking for a motion?
Yeah, I, well, unless there's any, any additional comment from the council.
Nope, I saw the flowers blooming in front of city hall, so I think we have to say that spring has arrived a little bit early.
And the, you know, and the, if, you know, there has been some activity, bear activity even in the middle of the winter and certainly in the time it would take, uh, any new regulations to come into play, I think we can be assured that some of the bears will be out. They're likely to be as hungry as they were when, more hungry than they were when they went to bed.
I, I agree.
And there's still not a whole lot of food out there, so I think this is an important issue for us to reenact.
Um.
This is, I'll just note that this ordinance, uh, oh, 2018 dash three, when someone agreed to make the motion.
2018?
Three.
No public hearing required? No, it's an emerg, not for an emergency ordinance. Got it, thank you.
Um, Mayor, with that then, I will move to, uh, adopt the attached emergency or, or ordinance, reenacting ordinance 2017 dash 18, which establishes temporary regulations and enhanced penalties for the violation of the provisions of the city code related to the use, placement and security of trash containers and requires strict compliance with those provisions to minimize conflicts with wildlife in the city and declaring an effective date and that was 2018 dash three, emergency ordinance.
Second. Moved in second, if, hey, we have a, a roll call.
Counselor Bricky?
Yes.
Counselor Marbury?
Yes.
Counselor Bateen?
Yes.
Counselor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
Item 11.1 is the introduction, introduction of an ordinance. Um, this is, whoops.
Is it 12.1?
Um, it's 11.1.
11.1, sorry.
And, well, okay. It's an ordinance approving the annexation and initial zoning of Lake Nighthorse, um, they, or simply the Nighthorse addition to the city of Durango and declaring an effective
Likewise, this is follow-up on the direction to prepare the annexation ordinance following the public hearing on this topic at the last council meeting. So this will be first reading of the ordinance to annex the property that's described on the attached exhibit, uh, into the city for the purposes of recreation management and police protection. And this will be, uh, ordinance, so 2018 dash four.
Do we need discussion on that?
But I might just say the obvious, which is it doesn't provide any discussion on the highly contentious, uh, issue regarding quiet versus motorized, uh, use of the lake, so this is not a decision on that in any way and it's simply moving forward to open the lake in whatever form it?
It takes, that's right. Um, with, is it already, if I make that motion?
I think it's just fine.
Okay.
Did all the work tonight.
Um, hmm, well, I, we all worked on it. We all worked on it, right Kathy? And Dirk? And Dirk, and former city councils. So, I move to approve ordinance 2018-4. Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second.
And a roll call.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Marbury?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Bricky?
Yes.
And Mayor White?
Yes.
And the last item on the formal agenda tonight is discussion and possible action concerning a motion to convene an executive session to determine matters related to, relating to potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property within the City of Durango, as permitted in CRS 2464024A.
Mayor, I move to convene an executive session to discuss matters relating to potential purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer, or sale of real property within the City of Durango, as permitted in CRS 2464024A.
Second.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And may we have a roll call.
Councilor Bricky?
Yes.
Councilor Marbury?
Yes.
Councilor Bateen?
Yes.
Councilor Youssef?
Yes.
Mayor White?
Yes.
And that concludes the public session of our meeting tonight. We will briefly reconvene after, at the end of the executive session to adjourn the meeting.